That's liquor license for the drag strip on the meeting.
Are you doing it in the general or just what anywhere in there?
Uh, in the, in the after Randy.
That is.
Anything else be going on there?
Make motion to approve with that addition.
One second.
All better. Oh, Gary, through the minutes of June tenth. Here's the minutes are all accounted for from everything last week, uh, motion to approve.
One second.
In discussion, all favor. You're no public concern. Does anybody here wants to comment, complain? Moving on. Mr. Ben.
Morning. We've got the one item for the agenda. Project agreement between the town of Thor and the county. I thought I had already completed this. Looking through the file.
I thought we'd done it too.
I couldn't find a copy of it anywhere and I went to the town council meeting last week. Uh, they signed off on. The project that's being done, the funding agreement as well as, uh, this project agreement. The language on it basically says that the county is doing ninety percent of the work. With the funding flowing through, uh, the state, so.
Okay.
Being reimbursed.
And being reimbursed, yes. So we're, we're flowing it through our farm to market account. Because it's on a farm to market route and then we're being reimbursed by the state.
I see in the number seven, it says if needed, if you can establish a payment. Uh, for up to five years, you anticipate that.
I don't, uh, orig- originally, originally I did anticipate that because the cost of box culvers was driving up. Um, but that's really tempered lately. I mean, we had those two local box culver jobs. Uh, that fell back into the, the realm of where our expenses normally were. Uh, preliminary estimates got at around a hundred and thirty-five thousand right now. So they should, so we should be fine, um, funding wise.
Good.
So.
Well, everything seems to be in order, obviously then I'll make a motion that we approve that project agreement between Thor and the county.
One second.
Oh, second.
And then.
Any other discussion? All favor.
This one does have a spot for everybody to say. Beyond, yeah, beyond that, uh. We're planning on posting the job opening, uh, for the Oden Hardy shop. We'll get it in the paper this week, uh, get it on the radio. Uh, the application and job description has been updated and posted onto the county's webpage. Uh, so that should be available for anybody to download.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it out there. Uh, paving, we've got a half day left on the Renwick Blacktop. Uh, we're about a half mile east of P sixty-six right now. The guys are really hoping to get that done today, so. My guess is if we get a window, which it looks like it's supposed to be stopping here shortly. We'll get everything broomed off, dried off and.
Finish the paving.
Finish that for that stretch.
Yeah.
Good. So, uh, from there, they've changed plans. They're gonna move to Hardy and Full South. So.
Okay.
As of early last week, they were gonna start down the county line and head north, but.
Changed their mind.
Changed their mind.
Good.
So.
Yeah, so it's the one path.
Yeah, it's all I gotta get done, so.
Yeah.
It's going well. So.
Um.
Do they do the shouldering work? Who does the shouldering?
Uh, their subcontractor for this project is Reddick. Yep. So they have proposed, um. Bringing in a, uh, crusher and, and screen and using millings.
Oh.
For shouldering, uh, I told them, I said, give me some pricing about your thinking. I said, obviously, we're not gonna pay the same price for millings that we've already paid you to mill.
Yeah.
Or rock fresh out of the quarry, but.
Yeah.
They're supposed to be getting some numbers together for us. But. No, the project's going well.
I see the state has used some. Millings.
Yeah.
Free.
Yeah.
Several spots there.
Yeah. And I don't know where their, where their stockpile came from, where the pile of millings came from for them. They have. Quite a bit larger resources that they can pack into than we do. But.
I would think they've worked.
I think, you know, I mean, if, if they're laid in there and rolled properly, I don't see why they would move.
Yeah.
You know, you shouldn't have to add edge rub material every year.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think so, but. Maybe the grass won't grow so close to road.
Right. Save on mowing too.
There's a mighty come off of thirty-five up there by Mason City could be. They got a long stretch of that, don't they?
Okay.
The teaser portion is, there's a long stretch that needs to be done.
It's really popping apart up there.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Anybody got anything for Ben?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. You got one, okay.
We're a little, little early, but I don't think it makes any difference, Randy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thought I'd give you a little, uh, report. I was gonna possibly do a, um, kind of a demonstration today, but I. Decided not to, uh, what you have there I'm passing out is, uh. Just a, uh, example somewhat of our geo permit, uh, online permitting for. Um, our building and special exception and, and variance applications. And, uh, I've been working with, uh, Stacy of Franklin, uh, in Indy, Indiana that, uh. Has basically, uh, we've gone through our permits that are paper copies right now. And, uh, we've designed the online portion that we would use. And what you have there in front of you is if I went to, uh, the website, which we will have in place, uh. I would see what they refer to as a workflow and many of you have probably seen these before. Uh, you go so far and then you, uh, it says next, you go to the next thing and then it says next. And you gotta fill those things out. Some of them.
Won't go forward.
Yeah, well, some of them won't go forward until you fill out a particular, uh, place. Uh, so this is, uh, electronic. Uh, it, it's an electronic version of what our paper version is now. It probably will change. Uh, as the ordinance would be rewritten, but, um, at, at some point. Uh, if you would desire, I could come in and I could give you an example, uh, presentation of it. But, uh, I thought, well, for right now, for what I needed to come here for, uh, this probably would be adequate. Um, I've been working with them, uh, I think it's the third Wednesday of every month. And for an hour, uh, uh, with two, there were actually two people that I've worked with. Eventually, uh, we wanna implement that and they have recommended that we go ahead and put this online. And I just explained to, to them, I said, well, before we do that, there's a couple of other things that we wanna take care of. And one of them, uh, since it would be an addition to the website, I didn't know whether that had to be approved or not. And so, uh, I know that you have approved, uh, implementing this. But I thought I'd better just double check to see if you, uh, wanna make an official and, and approval to place it online. Because it's an online, uh, application process. We know, and we've talked about this, that there are people out there that won't have a clue how to do this. Or in some cases, people don't even have a computer. So in the interim, we probably will submit, uh, paper copies if they want them. Um, that would be through the au- the auditor's office only. Normally, if they call me and say, how do I get a permit? Sometimes I've, uh, you know, sent them one by email. But I'm, I'm not gonna do that. I will just refer them to the website now. But if they, if they can't do that, somebody calls me up, they're not capable of doing that. I'll refer them to the auditor's office now and they can pick up a paper copy just like they always have. And once I get that, then, uh, I'll be able to, uh, give them a call. Either walk it through with them or, uh, meet with them or I can probably just, uh, fill out most of it myself. And then a lot of the stuff that I do already is communication by phone. And so it should work, it should work pretty well, but. You know, to do it for a while here, maybe a six months or a year, I don't know. Provides both options and, uh, maybe we have to do that, you know, indefinitely. I don't know.
Will you then input the ones that were paper copy? Will, will you input those into this so they're in the system?
The previous?
No, no, the, say, you're, if we give them a six month. Paper or website, are you then gonna put the ones?
Yeah.
I feel that they're all in there.
Any, any that are submitted by paper, I will then put them into the electronic. And as you may recall, this is all stored in the cloud.
Right.
And so everything is, uh, held there and, uh. You know.
Right.
It was, anybody could then, you know, get access to their permit.
I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, he would, they would just need to work with, um, Chris to get it on the website correctly and make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, that's about the only thing I think would need to be.
Yeah, I didn't know whether or not it had to be a voted approval, uh, to do that. I did, I, you know, I didn't know if you required that for some sort of an addition to the, uh, to the website. Uh, just, uh, as you can, if, if you look through this, again, it's basically very simple. In, in regards to, uh, I guess it'd be the second page with the back of the first page. First thing you would see would be the type of permit you would be applying for. So you'd click on that. It would take you then to, uh, parcel search. You'd basically put in, I put mine in. Just, uh, what the, uh, parcel would be and it's like a lot of those, you might only have to put your name in. Or you maybe put your address in and it brings it, it's all stored anyway, so it brings it up. And, uh, then it takes you to each, uh, each part that you need to, uh, take care of. And then. At the, at the last part is simply the, uh, you're submitting the application and then also included in this. Would be paying, payment for the application. And I've been working with, uh, uh, Trish and with, uh, Treasurer's Office. They're gonna set up a, a separate fund or a separate account for just these. And then that way that can keep, you know, they can keep track of that, uh, just, you know, doesn't go into just somewhere. It's actually going, and so the submission of that, uh, when, when this is all basically submitted. Then I receive an email that, that has been a permit that has been issued and then I can respond accordingly. In most cases, there probably has to be some clarifications on things.
Sure.
You know, and then also, uh, but I can take care of those just as I do now, like with a site visit. So, uh. Um, I, I guess I would say that I, I just would like to be able to tell them. You know, that, uh, we can go ahead, they're ready. They, they, uh, wanted to, uh, start. Two or three weeks ago and I said, well, let me just, you know, check to see if there's, needs to be some sort of a formal approval. Uh, and I, I didn't have the answer to it, so I, I just said I'd bring it to you.
And, uh. What did we do in the past? Cause I know there's several geothermal wells around the country.
I don't know, couldn't tell you.
Promoted this twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Or longer.
Right.
And I know that there's two or three of the people, the corn belt's got it, uh, the one that comes to mind. The last one I know of is Ron Sands out there and his went in the bottom of the well with that lake. Song, whatever you wanna call it.
Hmm.
He's got coils down there that's buried to.
Right.
To water.
Right, yeah. Um, you're talking about a geo.
Geothermal.
Yeah, this is just the name of the company.
Yeah.
So.
That's why I'd say, what did we do in the past? Because this, this has been around the country for.
I think, I think this is a different animal we started.
We're not, we're not talking about a geothermal.
Heating system.
Heating system. We're just talking about, that's the name of this company and they get it from, they're, they're working with, uh, you know, satellite imagery and it's, uh.
Right.
Basically by geographic.
Is this something that we need to get with, um, Sandy from Wright?
Well, that's the one thing, we're gonna have to change the number for, uh.
Sanitarium.
Sanitarium, health department.
Yeah.
Cause we got pokey, now we've switched to Wright.
Right.
So, so there probably have to be a few corrections.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, is there somehow we, cause they said that we could use this.
Yes.
Other things and maybe we, so that we're not reinventing the wheel somewhere else. That maybe we can, cause we talked about with Wright, being able to get this stuff online. They don't have their stuff online yet.
I, I, that, they're on the, and I didn't put it in here. They, they list those things, but there are other areas where this could be used and it's a long list.
Right, and that's, I remember you talked about that when that was one of the advantages going with this company.
My intention was just to get it started.
Right, correct. No, no, I get that, Randy, but I'm just thinking.
Yeah, long, long term, it'd be nice to have anybody that does any permitting of any kind.
Yeah.
You know, or, or you could use it for a lot of different things.
Right.
And they will design exactly what you want.
Right, just so that we utilize it, nothing right now that maybe.
And that's being paid for, you know, so. I.
Yep.
Uh, from what I've seen, excellent service from them. And, uh, couldn't be happier with it. If you can teach me, you can teach anybody, so. Uh, but we, again, we just took what we have right now with paper, converted it through this and we, they wanna start, so. I don't know if you need to approve it. If you've already approved the use of this, then it's okay. But I knew that was going on to the website. I didn't need to know, or I needed to know whether or not. You know, there had to be approval for that. I didn't know the procedure for that, so.
Well, my question.
I know.
I don't, I think. Fact that we approved the, the purchase of, of the program, this is what it was gonna be used for.
Right, we knew it was gonna go on, online.
It took a while to, Randy's explanation.
Yes.
To get up to speed and to work through with the company. I have a question before I forget about this. So the payments, once you get through all this, you can pay online.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So whatever you get, everything filled out and says like. Tells you what the fee is.
Yeah.
Or if some. Make an online payment once you've completed your online permitting.
And if somebody can't do that, some, there's some out there that can't do it or won't do it.
Right.
And so they could still do that in person in the office. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yep, okay.
So what do we do when? They don't do anything and they continue to do what some of them have done in the past?
Well, that's an open discussion. I, I have some thoughts on it. But in my way of thinking, um. When, when a new ordinance is written, I think that, in my opinion, needs to be.
Well, it has to be addressed.
There needs, there needs to be a penalty phase in it.
Yep.
Yeah, and.
And the process that you go through.
Most counties that I've looked at probably have a great difference in what we do. Basically, it's a hundred, hundred dollars. Most of the counties do it by square footage or by what the project is.
Percentage of the cost.
And, yeah, and so just a flat fee. You know, if you're putting a five thousand square foot home up or compared to a, you know, ten by twelve deck.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? There, there, I think there should be a difference. I don't know why the ordinance was originally written that way. Uh, I'm not criticizing it, I just think it.
Yeah, and just needs to be improved, updated and improved.
Yeah.
And I, if they don't do it, then there needs to be a penalty. You know.
Yeah, and I mean, up to this point, if we have a submission of a permit and it's late. Or if there was no permit at all, up to the point and I find out there is something there. Then by your directive, I contacted them, I give them a date where I have to have it. And then, uh, then I do a so, uh, side visit to, to get it taken care of. So, um, you know, as you directed me earlier on when I started, just give them, you know. But, cause you don't know, you don't know if it's intentional or if it's just they didn't know. Many of my.
Don't know.
No, I didn't know I needed a permit, you know, like, well, yeah.
You know, though, we've talked about this over time, ignorance of the law is no defense.
No, and that's why I think it should be an automatic thing, but it should be.
I think you've touched on it and maybe even hit the nail on the head. As these things are relooked through with the zoning, planning and zoning, then rewritten and revitalized. Once that's put in place, they're in force. It's just, this is what the requirement is. If it has not met, this is penalty and it isn't forced.
Right.
I think the biggest thing lacking is enforcement of anything.
Yeah. Well, and educating, we've, you know, done everything I think that we should be doing, so the gen- educating everybody. Newspaper, radio, whatever, but, you know, you're not gonna catch everybody.
Well. But most people that do anything with the, in contractors, a lot of times we'll say.
So.
You know, mention about permits and stuff like that, so.
They know.
Have someone do it in work.
This would be nice too, because it does include contractors. If they wanna submit the application for someone else, they're gonna know.
Do it, yeah.
You know, but again, later on down the line, I think it should be laid out exactly. You know, what the penalties would be for.
There you go.
You know.
Yep.
Regardless, you know, of what they are, what they're building, it should be. Uh, it, I think the penalty should apply to whatever is that they're doing and maybe that's by square footage or what the project is or so on and so forth. Um, as far as Bruce, you're, uh, I would, I would mention this, as far as the agricultural permits. As you recall, we cannot require them. And so in this, when they get to a certain point, they're going through this online. If it's an agricultural submission, it will actually subvert around most of the stuff that's here. And then basically what happens is, and this is what I've done with the paper copy, okay, uh. Maybe they've submitted it and maybe they have it, but I usually give them a call, explain to them this is an agricultural. First of all, determine whether it is according to the ordinance. And then I just simply say, if you wanna submit this bear voluntarily, you can do it, won't cost you a thing. Then it'll be on record, cause I get the stuff from the assessor's office.
Yes.
I just say, you can do it voluntarily, you don't want to, that's fine, you know, so, uh. But that's, that's the way I've done it up to this point and, like I said, they can pretty much. Go around some of the stuff that's on here then, but at least we have a record.
So during the changes that you mentioned, Rick, we get that stuff taken care of and then. Authorized to go ahead and implement, put it in the website form or how, what, how do we move forward?
I'll just say, I don't think you would do anything else right now as far as those things.
What I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see where you wanna try to make those changes, because then if you come down and you rewrite the ordinance. You're gonna redo it anyway.
Phone number that Rick pointed out that we don't deal with pokey anymore. We deal with Wright County, anything that's in here that's.
Right.
Incorrect.
Yeah.
I need to make them change.
Yeah, I think you better review it again before.
Yeah, and that was my intention too, was review it with those people in jail, uh, from, from there. And, um, just make sure we have it. And again, like I said. It's gonna have to all be redone at some point in time with the ordinance change, so, but we've got it. What we have now, we now have online. Just a matter of, of doing it, so.
Perfect.
Just go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
What I figured, but I thought I better check.
Okay.
Well, along that, and this is a, for Randy, this came from Chris and we all got to back here, which is not very long ago, a couple of weeks. It's, it is Snyder Geo Spatial, invoice, we do roll forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. You had a question, you, you had sent us out about payment, upset bill. You, you sent up and said something about that needing to be paid. And I thought this would be a good time to bring this up and follow up, is it paid, then this skill, fiscal year?
I did go ahead and pay it, put it under the supervisors for now. It can be changed, but there is not a place under the budget.
Where?
It's only where.
Okay, so that'll need to be put into the budget then to make sure that we have that in the budget.
Align item.
Align item.
Mm-hmm, and, you know.
So when you do your budget, you need to make sure you add that.
It's not right now listed under the zoning, but I, would you say it would be the, in the future?
There will be yearly charge, you know.
Yeah.
No, it's not that.
It's not, it's not, that's just the startup.
Yeah.
And then every year, maybe.
Remember what it was every year.
If we just budget for it under the. Um, IT also, or make sure that that's included with the budget.
Yep, that's true.
That Geo certainly. Wasn't it? There was enough money in even in the IT line item, there is a line item for that.
Um. I'm not sure at the moment what's in there.
You could make an argument that it comes out of there because it is.
Web based.
Well, yeah, it is something offered that's through.
All I remember is it was approved.
Yes.
I remember what's been paid.
That's the thing is, you know, you gotta put it under a column somewhere.
Right, right. Where do you put it? I think Chris's concern was, there really wasn't a specific spot for that to come out of.
That's what I recall.
I started Chris's Monday, I'll just say the supervisor foot.
Yeah, and I don't know, he's had some unexpected step come up. With solutions and stuff, so.
But we're gonna find something, so we'll.
Any other questions?
No. Hey, thank you, that's Randy.
I think they're.
I was, oh, good, I'm glad it's not just me. I think they could come up with a little better mascot.
Yeah, I thought what, what a slug.
I, I. That was the.
Don't ask me.
Snyder makes sense, but the Geo throw me, it's not.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. All right, moving on down, fruit, classy liquor license without door sale for Humboldt County Dragway.
Coffee.
Get a coffee, I'll come back to you.
It looks like they've got insurance and everything. That's stayed in the back.
Just a mention now, sir.
So what was affected nationwide then?
That was their tentative.
Tendon, okay. So what will be the effect?
So we approve it.
Okay, there's a, okay. Just so we have that on there.
As long as they haven't been selling before.
Yeah.
That's their responsibility, right?
Right.
Right, you don't have to get this, well, we just got this then.
Very.
All right, well, I'll make that motion to give some liquor license for the Humboldt County Dragway LLC.
Oh, sorry.
Any other discussion? All favor.
Hi.
All.
Very, this has to do with the concert things you're having coming up.
I know. That for some, very true, that's gracious.
Heard. Said we've figured out the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And did races out there. Nice to see it up and going again.
Yeah.
Committee report. All right, as past Tuesday, we had a public safety committee meeting that morning at eight o'clock. Um. That was not only official, extra meeting, public safety.
Okay, on Monday at two, we had campus votes. Um. Tuesday morning, I had an eight o'clock at the public safety meeting. Uh, Thursday morning, eight o'clock, at Humboldt County Economic Development. Thursday afternoon at one P M, I did a tour of the, uh, what I call the North Care Center, that they're turning into apartments.
Question.
Yes.
Are they, cause, are they going the apartments, uh, north and south then? Cause you see one door.
Yes, they go clear across the building.
That's what I thought, they must be going clear across, so that.
Yeah.
Waited, mom wanted to go look at it and we drove by there and I thought.
No, they started on the south, right, north side.
Yeah, it's kinda, they're gonna have, I think they're gonna have five apartments ready in July here.
Okay.
They're all, you know, they kinda started in the south west corner or.
Right.
They're all in different parts of it in different stages, they're gonna kinda do it in like four different sections.
Okay.
Maybe five. And then as they get them done, they'll put them up for rent.
What they do with the gathering areas, that they used to have, like where the nurses station was and stuff like that.
That center is gonna be a access apartments through the center, there is gonna be a. Social gathering room there that might be up for rent or whatever, he didn't really know for sure. There's a lot of stuff that's still up in the air.
I was just curious. What are they called?
It's north something.
Yeah. North apartments?
Yeah.
Yeah, this north something apartments, I, I can't remember the official.
But they're gonna be one to two and three bedroom apartments. So.
I didn't realize they're gonna do all three, wow, that's.
Yeah, they're gonna be multiple different choices.
Okay.
Uh, the majority of them will have walk-in showers, there will be a few of them that will have bathtubs in case people that rent them have small children or require a bathtub.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the guy's got a, got a lot of work to do in there yet.
Yeah.
Cause I think the very northwest corner hasn't had much done to it yet.
Yeah, no, there's not, I haven't, we drove around it the other day and.
They're, they're working on the outside, getting the outside done and stuff.
The northeast side there, but the northwest, I don't think they've done anything, unless they restarted it.
Yeah.
We went, drove around.
But they wanna get all the outside work done before they get anything rented, so it doesn't look like a construction site, like it's not on there, I guess.
Sense.
But no. Uh, that was on Thursday afternoon, and then I think Thursday afternoon, I went and helped Perry call them a weed thing. With some people, and that was it, for me.
All right, Monday at two, I was here for the, uh, canvas, the election. We had some questions, so we ended up having to come back Tuesday morning and finish up. Um, so that was my two.
Uh, I forgot that.
Yeah.
Put me in out for Tuesday.
I come back. Yeah, I thought of that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I did too, Rick said, go sign the papers, so I did.
Yeah, I guess I kinda missed the meeting, but I had to come up and sign papers.
Okay, I did the same thing, canvassed in the afternoon, my Tuesday morning. Um, and then also Wednesday, I had a ISAC. Um, webinar on legislative wrap-ups, it was very interesting. I hadn't been able to get online yet to look at it, but there's a couple of things, um. The compensation board, they, they passed a, a legislature on that, and, um. So we have to determine by, all compensation boards dissolve July one. Um, B O S may establish comp- compensation board by majority vote. Um, B O S takes up on authority, obligation of comp boards if one is not established. New requirement of comp board for B O S to document comparisons for all research, I thought that was. And then there was something in the segment. And one picture, they went too fast on it and I couldn't get it, I haven't been able to get online yet to look to see it. Oh, um, they were talking about the general basic, did you, did you do that, did you get on that webinar? Okay, um, general basic and rural basic leavings, um. They're gonna, that S F, there's a S F two four four two, you might wanna look into that, there's some things that we need to. Change on that for, um, property taxes and stuff. And once I get on line and get the other, now there was a couple of other things, but I, right when I finally got my picture camera going.
Yeah.
They changed it, I'm not that quick, I should have had my camera ready. Um, but anyway, there's, there is some legislative stuff that, of course. And then, um, the thirteenth, I had another webinar for implement, implementation for our alcohol. Um, for the alcohol coalition, what we're gonna do and how, how we need to do it. But we're getting there, it's, it's been a long process, but when state's involved, it's a state funded program. We've gotta do all these implementation webinars and all this, all this fun stuff. And that's it, that's all I had.
Uh, I gotta add one more thing, Trish, I jumped over that, Tuesday night, I went up to seven sixteen Maine, I got. I had a couple of farmers who told me that, hey, you probably should go to this window meeting. Um, wasn't especially invited, but I went anyway and listened to them. So.
Did it be you too?
They did have a nice meal, I will say, seven sixteen provided a nice meal.
Oh, I forgot.
Even after they weren't gonna let you in.
You know, after they weren't gonna let me in, but they did let me in.
So Humboldt County, we're doing the food, um, the twelfth month of giving, we're doing July. So, um, apple, so, uh, people, if they want to, we can either do cash donations. And every department's gonna have these at their windows, or you can bring canned fruit or applesauce.
Okay, Monday, I was here Monday afternoon for the vote. Tuesday morning for the votes. Wednesday the twelfth, I had a man and a half shoulder meeting. And that's it for the week.
Have we, uh, heard anything on, I've had numerous people ask about the dam? The legal update, um, I guess my question is, I hope they aren't spending, this is going on what week three?
Yep.
Putting the paperwork together for the sale of that thing, I hope we aren't getting billed like the last time. And we end up, cause we don't need a six or a seven thousand dollar.
Bill.
Bill for that whole thing.
Closing statement of contract drawn up.
Bill.
Well, I remember right, Todd, when he was in here, he mentioned that this is, there's not a lot of precedence on these. So they're making sure that all those legal, everything's covered on the legal part of it. So.
We pay them every month, wait, they ought to be getting this done.
Well, hopefully, I said I'd bring it up.
Okay, Todd, have some meeting, find out.
Perfect.
There is a conservation meeting this Wednesday night, so. Uh, where are we at on janitor? Part-time custodian. Paul's gonna be on vacation here in the morning. We need somebody, have they been advertising, is it still open?
Still open. Just had enough of patients, leave it on the website. I think it's done.
Hey, we might wanna have Chris, Drew Banford on the website.
Put his cup, let's get somebody hired part-time.
And if worse comes to worse, so Paul goes on vacation, we can always, you know.
You got Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday.
Exactly, there you go. No, I'm just saying that if worse comes to worse, there's, like, there's services that, you know, we can.
I can't jump in on a Sunday. That's nice of you.
Volunteer, volunteers.
Anything else come for the board?
I make a motion to adjourn then.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all favor. Nine old eleven.